San Carlos City Council, successor agency to the redevelopment agency Housing Authority, regular meeting of January 22, 2018. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda, staff?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
The dais. Anyone want to change anything? All right. Mr. Rubin's report from closed session.
There's no report from the closed session in the special meeting.
All right. Number five is presentations. Presentation of the council on Get Us Moving, San Mateo County. I have a note here that Supervisor Horstley was supposed to speak first, but maybe Mr. Stone is going to be doing that, right after Tara does whatever she does. I'm just guessing that you're going to take his place.
I'll do a song and dance for you. Now, my name is Tara Peterson and the interim public works director. This evening, we have the speaker from Get Us Moving Initiative who represent the San Mateo County Transit District's efforts to put forward a countywide transportation measure on the next ballot. And with that, I'll introduce Charles Stone.
Charles Stone, council member from Belmont. Welcome.
Thank you, Senator Selly. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. In my role as Chair of the SAM Trans Board, I've been sharing some responsibilities with Supervisor Horstley, Supervisor Slocum, Supervisor Groom, and Supervisor Pine in coming to various council meetings to give the introduction for the Get Us Moving San Mateo County Community Outreach on Transportation Priorities. Next slide, please. Oh, I can control my own voice. So this is a partner effort between the County of San Mateo and the San Mateo County Transit District, colloquially known as SAM Trans. I'm actually not going to get too far into this because my good friend Russ Arnold is going to take most of it. My job is just kind of build the context for what we're doing and why we're doing it and how it came about. Beginning about two years ago, the San Mateo County Transit District Board urged staff to start thinking innovatively and to stop thinking with what we termed a scarcity mentality. We wanted to think about what we could do if we had more revenue, what we could do if our current constraints didn't exist. We also wanted to hear from the community about what they thought was a priority and how we might get, for instance, people of the demographic that don't get on the bus right now on the bus. Or maybe a bus isn't the answer. What would get you on public transit? That led to discussions of a potential ballot measure in 2018, November of this year. And before we think about that, what we wanted to do was have a dialogue with the community to both help inform them as to what we currently do, what we've done in the past, what we would like to do, and to hear from them what they would like to see from us. We've been a multimodal leader for quite a number of years. There's something on the order of $500 million that we've employed, whether through debt or cash financing of regional projects. Barton Milbrae, the extension, would not exist if SAM Trans had not stepped up and helped finance that. Of course, that came at a cost, and we're currently saddled with approximately $20 million a year in debt service on that project. The Caltrain Right of Way that we all take for granted now because everybody wants to ride Caltrain. Fifteen, 20 years ago, Caltrain ridership was nothing like it is now, and there was a time at which the right of way could have gone away. SAM Trans stepped up, purchased the right of way so that we still have the capability to transport what is now 60,000 people a day up and down the spine of the peninsula. That's, you know, if every one of those riders was in a car, that's 60,000 more cars on 101 or El Camino, and I don't think anybody wants that. So we want folks to understand this. We also made an investment in the Dunbarton Corridor many years ago and purchased the Dunbarton Right of Way and the Dunbarton Rail Corridor, which holds tremendous promise. We've been trying to be innovative. We've been trying to partner with private partners. We recently received $1.2 million from Facebook to fund a study of the Dunbarton Corridor, and that study has showed us many different alternatives that could help ease congestion along there. We're trying to think innovatively. We're talking to TNCs about partnering with them. And we're also trying to go back to what we think are some of the most important riders, our young riders. We were very pleased to be able to partner with you in communicating with your school communities and to bring service back to San Carlos that helps young riders get to and from various locations, including Carlmont and Terellinda campus. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Russ Arnold from the San Mateo County Transit District, who's going to take you through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. I assume you're going to stay for the entire meeting, right?
Am I squirming?
Mr. Arnold, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you. I don't know what Mr. Stone's title is officially since he's on Caltrain and SAM Trans and so honorable something.
Let us have other titles.
So just a little context. We've found that as we do some of these presentations, we get asked, well, why aren't you working together with? A lot of times, we get asked, why don't you work together with Caltrain and the Transportation Authority, which actually are all run by the San Mateo County Transit District? So SAM Trans, Caltrain, and the TA are all run by the same people essentially. They have different boards, so it's a little different, but we do work together. So who else do we work with? We work with CCAG and Commute.org. Commute.org is primarily shuttles, employer shuttles, working with the TA for funding, and then coordinating with the Transit Authority to make sure that we don't have duplicative So San Mateo County, projections are there's going to be more people here, right? So 900,000 by 2040. It's 26% increase between 2010 and 2040. We have an aging population, 137% growth in 65 or older in the county. New homes being built that will be geared towards public transportation, and our pair transit ridership continues to grow. It'll be expected to be around a million riders by 2040. And there's challenges, right? We have roads to fix, we have congestion, we have clogged bridges. You know, the traffic in San Mateo County in this area is some of the worst in the country. So, you know, we want to try to address those challenges. We want to try to maintain the livability, the standard of livability in San Mateo County. And so there are a lot of ideas on how we can help with that. And these just represent a few, and in a few slides, they'll have numbers to them to truly understand the resource impact that would be needed to generate to do any of these. But these are some of the ideas, some of the big ideas that are out there on how we could, you know, affect congestion and traffic relief, not just on the 101, but down El Camino and in, you know, small neighborhoods that are experiencing a lot of traffic that is trying to escape 101 but bleeding into cities like San Carlos. Oh, sorry. So some of those ideas, these are some of the numbers. So if you add them up, the Dunbarton one does have a B next to it. If you thought that was a typo, it's not. So that's $2 billion to rebuild, remake, transform the Dunbarton Corridor. You see 400 million for Caltrain modernization. That is to take us fully modernize the electrification project currently. When it launches in 2022, we'll have 75% electric, 25% diesel still. So there's still ways to go to make sure that becomes a full electric system. And then a 101 managed lane project that would get express buses in 101 to move people even faster is another half a minute or $500 million. So ideas, resources. And earlier last year, I guess it's 2018 now, AB 1613 allowed us to put a half cent sales tax on the ballot. This would generate about $80 million a year. So you see the projections. They're still, we'll wait on the direction of the board of supervisors as well as the SAM Trans Board. Will be a 10-year, will be a 30-year. Those things are still being assessed. But it will need to even go on the ballot, need approval from the board of supervisors as well as SAM Trans Board, and they'll need a two-thirds approval by county voters to succeed. And so right now, we're in the education outreach effort. We want people to know that we're looking at ideas, but we want to know what the community's ideas are, what they would like to see done. So we've got a number of things going on. We're diligently making it to all council meetings such as this. We have some town halls coming up, as well as we've got TV ads running, we've got direct mail running, we've got some social media campaigns. We've got a pretty extensive marketing outreach campaign as well as a face-to-face outreach with the community to truly understand what the community wants done, not, you know, just our big ideas, what are their big ideas and what are their priorities. So along with that, there's some direction that we get, and it wouldn't be transit if we didn't have a ton of acronyms. So we have a TAG and a SAG. The TAG is a technical advisory group. Those are made up of your city managers, people that actually do this work and make sure our cities, you know, continue to move daily. And the SAG is community groups, private sector, and they, you know, weigh in on what their visions are. And so we take those. We also have a steering committee. We also have an ad hoc committee. We have lots of committees, trying to find out what everybody would like. And we're trying to synthesize that with the public comments that we're getting either through the direct mail that has a tear-off self-mailer to give us community priorities. There's a whole bunch of them in the back. If anybody'd like to grab them, fill it out, throw it in the mail, we'll get it. Same with the website. So it mirrors the website. And currently, we've had about in the neighborhood of 10,000 respondents through the mail, and we're approaching about 1,000 on the website. So we're getting some, what we feel, some good feedback so far. We've been live with those things right around Thanksgiving, so. But there is no expenditure plan. And I learned early on not to throw out what I think it could be with examples to tell everybody bike and ped could be this, and because then somebody quotes me and then it ends up I've got to handle that in my day job when the press calls and explain to them, there is no expenditure plan yet. We truly want to understand what the community wants done, what they feel their priorities are, and how those mesh with the ideas that already put forth, and how it could mesh with emerging ideas that are coming out of the SAM Trans business plan, or as we have conversations like this. So there is no expenditure plan yet. We really want to understand what the community would like to see done to affect traffic and congestion. So how can you help? Let us know what you think. Let us know what you want done. Please, any feedback will help with that. So you can see, you can email us, you can promote it on social, you can go to the website. We ask that maybe you only do it once, but you know, if you're super passionate, we'll worry about how many times you send in a direct mail to us later. We do have some town halls coming up. So this Thursday, we're in San Mateo, and then the first, we're going to be in Pacifica, then Menlo Park, and then later in February, we'll be in South San Francisco, all to get feedback from the community in similar ways that we have been getting feedback from the community. And there's a website, our Facebook page, and email if you would like to get involved and give us your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Questions, Mr. Collins?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Olber. I forgot where everybody was sitting.
And you moved us.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was that? I couldn't hear you. My hearing's going. Thank you both for a very good presentation, and let me also say, I applaud the fact that a public agency is actually trying to do what I would think of in the private sector as a little visioning exercise to try and figure out what to do rather than wait for problems to come up and smack us in the face like a dead fish. So I applaud you doing that. One question I have, and it relates to kind of the notion of how some of these alternatives are going to be evaluated, which I think relates to how the public will perceive things. I'm going to use a specific example because it's one that I'm personally familiar with, the Managed Lane Project for 101, which I've been involved with periodically because of being on CCAG where it gets discussed a lot. Price tag, as you pointed out, estimated at around half a billion dollars. I remember a couple of presentations that were done about the impact it was expected to have if this concept was put in place. And the impact that I recall was, I asked a consultant, and he said, well, it's like a 2% to 3% improvement in travel time. And I said, well, is that significant? He says, well, that's kind of in the noise level. And this was from a few years ago, so things may have evolved since then. But I think one of the challenges that the community is going to have, and I know I have in looking at this, I clearly agree. I don't think there's anybody in San Mateo County who commutes who doesn't know there's a problem, okay, as you so eloquently pointed out. But that's different than knowing, like, where ought we to spend the resources? Where do we get the most bang for the buck? So what is the process by which these types of alternatives will be evaluated so that people can be reasonably comfortable that whatever money we end up putting at the problem will actually be generating some benefit?
Sure. So right now, there was a call for projects, so I can't remember how many. We've got 100, 110 projects from cities, from transit agency on ways to mitigate congestion and traffic relief. Those are being scored by a group of kind of transit experts and experts in terms of city experts and everything else, and they're ranking them in terms of impact. So kind of high, medium, low in terms of what they think will impact. But a lot of the scoring is going to be predicated on what we hear from the community. So we're going to take this first phase. There's going to be a second phase that will have some more granular information about the categories that people indicated were important to them from the first phase and give some more specificity about the types of projects that would affect those. So potholes, for example, is one of the things that you can go in and rate and say, this is my number one problem that I want fixed, or is it congestion relief? So we'll take those, we'll make kind of buckets for all those, and then people will be able to score them, and there'll be a small write-up giving people more understanding of what we hope. And again, you know, some of this is, if you've been on CCAG, I'm certain you've seen a lot of modeling and everything else, and, you know, a lot of it is, you put all your big heads together and you come up with a guess, right? And that's kind of where we're at. We think that these are going to have, you know, big impacts, right? I do believe the travel time's gotten significantly better from the 2% to 3% that was indicated a while back. But then there's also, there's not just the travel time for transit and how quickly it would improve or improve for anybody using that managed lane, but it's also how many people would adopt that, right? And then we have to, if it's 101, where does it go from? Does it start to take a little bit of ridership from Caltrain, which may be okay, you know, if those two things compete and give people different choices? So modeling all those things out as well, how many people we believe would actually utilize the solution that we put in place? I don't know if that helped you.
No, it does. And I wasn't expecting anything other than what you gave, which is a description of the process. So I'm glad there is a process that's, that sounds well thought out. I guess I will just close by saying, in the case of the particular example I was using, I just hope that people with all of the projects, not just that one, bring a reasonably skeptical eye to the purported benefits when they're ranking things. Not because I'm trying to stop anything, because like I said, there is a problem with commuting transit, and we need to figure out how to solve it. It's just that I want to make sure that when we're talking, when we're flinging around numbers in the billion-dollar range, it really helps to make sure that we get as much bang for the buck as we can.
Understood.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comment. This is for items, people, folks wishing to speak on items not on the posted agenda, and each speaker is limited to two minutes. I have one speaker card. Michael Yurka. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. In light of the recent earthquake, I just wanted to bring up the issue of building safety, seismic building safety. There are two areas that San Carlos, if it hasn't already, could improve building safety standards. This would involve two measures that are not part of standard California law, but have been implemented by other municipalities. The first is the issue of buildings with a soft story condition. These are generally apartment buildings with wide openings on the first floor. Yeah, it's common in many older apartment buildings. With older building code standards, the risk is that the first floor will collapse from sheer forces. San Francisco has implemented a soft story retrofit ordinance, which has required apartment building property owners to ensure that their buildings are up to modern building code standards. There's also other municipalities looking at similar measures, such as Oakland. San Carlos should do the same. The second is the issue of hillside The second is the issue of hillside homes. After the Northridge earthquake, many hillside homes in Los Angeles failed and slid down the hill. Los Angeles analyzed the failure mode of these homes and enacted the Los Angeles Hillside Code to address these deficiencies. To this day, even new homes are being built in California that do not address the issues discovered after the Northridge earthquakes. This is something that has not made it to the California Building Code, and San Carlos should also follow the model of Los Angeles and enact stricter building codes for hillside homes.
That's all. Thank you for your comments, sir. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are normally done by one motion. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right. Item 8 is Reports to Council. Reports to Council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. And 8A is Report to City Council on Port-in-Place Rubber Playground Surfacing, and an update on Environmental Impact Report on additional field lights at Burton Park and Highlands Park. Ms. Newby?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, councilmembers, and members of the community. My name is Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. I'll begin tonight by discussing the port-in-place rubber surfacing, most recently installed at Highlands Park. Port-in-place rubber surfacing consists of two layers. The underlayer, known as the impact layer, is comprised of clean and recycled SBR rubber. Above that is a solid wear layer comprised of an EPDM rubber. Both of these products are safe and non-toxic. The concerns raised regarding the manufacturer's warnings of the material pertain to the mixing of the product in the factory and not to the actual completed playground surfacing installed in parks. Port-in-place rubber surfacing meets or exceeds all safety and accessibility standards and guidelines, including the American Disability Act, Consumer Product Safety Commission, and American Society for Testing and Materials. In the city's general plan, under the Parks and Recreation element, a guiding principle of park development and improvements are to provide facilities and recreational opportunities for all residents of all ages and abilities. Policy PR 2.9 also states to continue building and renovating playgrounds to universal accessibility standards. The port-in-place rubber surfacing in our playgrounds achieves these goals in each of the statements. A majority of parks here in San Carlos have this type of playground surfacing. Arguelo Park's renovation, which included the installation of port-in-place rubber surfacing, was completed in 2006. Burton Park in 2008, L'Oriola Park in 2011, Cressy Park in 2014, and most recently, the playground surfacing was installed at the playground in Highlands Park. Numerous Bay Area parks choose this playground surfacing for the safety and accessibility factors, and this material is considered the industry standard from a safety and accessibility Moving on tonight, I'll provide an update on the environmental impact report for improved and additional field lighting at Burton and Highlands Parks. Parks and Recreation schedule over 21,000 hours of field use each year on the city's seven sports fields and the school district's three sports fields, and annually roughly 8,000 sport participants use our fields. San Carlos is known as a sports community with a very active and engaged, with very active and engaged residents. However, due to priorities set forth in our field, outlined in our field use policy, non-traditional sports, such as lacrosse and field hockey, cannot be accommodated. Our own Parks and Recreation programs are limited, and we are unable to expand our current offerings of outdoor youth and adult athletic programs. In addition to the challenges of meeting the current demand, each year we see an increase in field requests from the traditional and larger sport organizations, including soccer, baseball, and softball. In 2008, the city completed the Parks Open Space Buildings and Recreational Facilities Master Plan, which recommended maximizing use of existing fields to meet the demand, specifically the addition of field lighting at Flanagan Field and Stadium Field. To review the timeline to date, the project was included as part of the capital improvement program budget in fiscal year 2016 to 2018. On November 4th, 14th of 2016, a verbal update was given to City Council at the, and at the following meeting on November 28th, the contract for the EIR was awarded to LSA Associates. The project scoping committee meeting was held on June 13th of 2017, and more recently, we held a public hearing on the draft EIR on December 6, 2017, giving residents the opportunity to provide verbal comments focusing on whether the draft EIR is sufficient in discussing possible impacts to the physical environment, ways in which potential adverse effects may be avoided or minimized through mitigation measures, and alternatives to the proposed project in light of the EIR's purpose to provide useful and accurate information about such factors. The proposed project includes the installation of new LED field lights at Flanagan Field and Stadium Field, and the upgrade of existing metal halide lights at Madsen Field and Lower Highlands Field. New LED lights are more energy efficient and offer advanced sport lighting technology to reduce light spillover and glare. The project also considers updates in the field use policy at Highlands Field to make field use consistent with the rules governing all other city fields, which would alter some of the operational restrictions within the 2010 settlement agreement regarding the use of Highlands Park, consistent with the procedure in the agreement for making such changes. At this time, there are no plans to install synthetic turf at Burton Park or Highlands The public commenting period was extended, and we will be receiving comments on the draft EIR through February 15th. After that date, the council will review all oral and written comments received during this time and prepare responses in the final EIR. It will be in late spring of this year where City Council will have the consideration of certification of the final EIR and approval of the project. Staff will be submitting a budget request for the lighting project as part of the upcoming fiscal year 2018-2020 budget process. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Any questions from the dais? All right. I have a number of speaker cards to go through. We have a two-minute limit on conversation tonight, because I have a number of them, so I would appreciate if folks could be concise in their comments. First one is, first person up is Peter McMahon. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Peter McMahon. I'm a 20-year resident of San Carlos and a 10-year business owner of San Carlos. I want to come here today to speak against the installation of lights on Stadium Field. I was part of a citizens' group that was opposed to that prior, and that citizens' group continues to be opposed. I just want to spend a brief moment reminding the council as to the process that was involved in that last fight, and make some one point about that. In the summer of 2002, certain people in the Parks Department had the grand idea of creating a sports complex at Highlands Field, where they would light both Stadium and the lower field Highlands, and they would put in synthetic turf. That immediately galvanized a large number of citizens who were both opposed to the lights as well as the turf, and it posed, it pitted neighbor against neighbor for a long-drawn-out battle in San Carlos. In July of 2003, the Parks and Recreation Commission failed to endorse the installation of synthetic turf at Highlands Park. From April 2005 to September 2005, a Fields Committee formed by the city studied the field issue and published two opinions. A majority opinion recommended synthetic turf at Highlands Park, and a minority opinion recommended synthetic turf at Tierra Linda Middle School. In February 2006, the Parks and Recreation Committee voted in favor of the minority opinion to place synthetic turf at the middle school, not at Highlands. In May of 2006, the City Council voted unanimously to renovate Highlands Park Lower Field with natural grass, and also voted to prioritize the renovation of the park over placing synthetic turf at school. Between 2006 and 2008, nothing happened. In April of 2008, the City Council set an about-face and voted to proceed with the initial study of a SEQA, similar to what they're doing now, an EIR report. In March of 2009, the San Carlos Youth Advisory Council voted to recommend to the city not to put synthetic turf at Highlands Park. On April 13th, 2009, the city held a public meeting after several hours of public testimony and opposition to the project, and following that public comment, on April 13th, 2009, the city approved the project and proceeded. On 30 days later, on May 13th, a coalition of citizens filed a lawsuit against the city. On August 10th, 2010, the court issued a draft statement of decision finding in favor of the citizens and not the city. A settlement was reached, and that settlement, in order for the current project to go forward, will have to be completely thrown out the window. Whether that is, there is a contractual ability to that, to do that or not, is an open question of law that I will be pursuing, but it's also an ethical consideration for the council. I also was present in two years' worth of discussions with the city, and the reason why the city insisted it had to put turf at Highlands, keep in mind, we're talking about the lower field where the lights already existed, was because the grass, no matter what quality of grass could be put in there, would not withstand the increased use. At that time, they were talking about completely redoing the field and putting in turf, you know, equal to what they put in AT&amp;T.
Mr. McMahon, I've already given you four minutes, because I know you were just going to speak with Mr. Dito, or for Mr. Dito, but you're over that now. Could you sort of wrap it up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So now, the city wants to expand the use, by virtue of it, what it wants to do, by throwing out the provisions of the settlement agreement, and now magically, the grass that's on Stadium will somehow be sufficient to withstand the lights. There's no common sense reason how an increased use with grass at night will, that field will withstand that, and it's reasonably foreseeable the city will have to turf the field. And that will be, that's problematic, and I implore you to have more and more hearings about this, because I know as that becomes a reality, either kill the project now or tell the Parks and Rec to put turf on the agenda so we can have a proper debate about this and kill it once again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The next speaker card I have is Dawn Brozek. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Dawn Brozek. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 17 years, and my kids play sports at Highlands Park. I am alarmed that the City Council, that the city installed rubber tire waste at Highlands Playground when the EPA, the Centers for Disease Control, the Consumer Product Safety Commission, and the Cal EPA's Office of Environmental Health Hazards are all researching the harmful effects of these materials on humans. At the county level last year, the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury issued a report about these materials. This chart is from the Cal EPA study and details what is known from past studies. Chemicals found in these materials include benzene, mercury, and hexane, with the known health effects of cancers, including leukemia, neurotoxicity, developmental damage, and reproductive harm. These chemicals are found in rubber play mats like port-in-place and in the plastic blades of artificial turf. Why is the city using materials for public spaces that contain known carcinogens and neurotoxins, especially when these, this is under scrutiny from all levels of government? This raises uncomfortable questions about due diligence and accountability. When the city fails in its duty to protect residents from harm, it undermines the trust the residents have that the city is acting in the best interest of the residents. In a similar vein, the EIR for lights at Stadium Grass Field has eroded trust in the city about its transparency of the full scope of the project. What is the point of exploring lights for nighttime play without a commitment to invest in proper maintenance of a grass field? What the lights EIR does is pave the way for installation of another toxic field at Highlands Park. The San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury report states that officials should include the public early on in their decision-making process to allow for input about what health risks are acceptable to the public and their children. What health risks are acceptable? Is cancer acceptable? Is neurological damage acceptable? Is reproductive harm acceptable? I'm asking that the city remove the tire waste from Highlands Playground and commit to end the pursuit of lights and plastic turf at Stadium Field. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Heidi Liebengoth.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you very much. I read the staff's report on the children's playground installation stating that the surface materials are safe. Then I stopped by Highlands Park myself. The colorful virgin rubber is mixed with the toxic recycled tire rubber in a majority of the surface area. Not only that, but loose pellets of the black tire rubber are scattered across the entire surface. When I pointed it out to several mothers who were there with their babies and toddlers, they were very concerned and upset. Problem is, the people who are most affected by the toxic mix are unable to come and speak to you here tonight at 7:30 PM. This is when they're putting their children to bed. I beg you to consider them and the cumulative health effects on their children and remove all the toxics at the park. I also read the staff report on lights at Highlands Park. First, the proposal intends to remove every safety requirement and traffic mitigation that was guaranteed to citizens when Save San Carlos Parks prevailed in its lawsuit against the city's unreasonable overuse of Highlands Lower Field. These mitigations were essential in keeping the park and the narrow streets around it safe in 2010. They are even more important now as usage has grown. This was a binding agreement. It is not right to suddenly decide that it wasn't. On top of removing all these guaranteed mitigations, the proposal also intends to dramatically increase usage by putting lights at Stadium Field itself. This action would require more, not fewer, mitigations, which the EIR ignores completely. We all know that additional hours of play on a lighted field at Stadium would degrade the grass, just as it did at Highlands Lower Field, and artificial turf would quickly become a necessity, despite the staff's claim that there is no current plan for it. To pretend otherwise is a deceit. The EIR is filled with false and misleading statements. For example, on page 42, the EIR says that Highlands Park is located in an urban and built-out area. On the contrary, Highlands Park and its surrounding area is home to owls, bobcats, deer, raccoons, mountain lions, and other wildlife. Stadium Field is an important wildlife corridor. Additional noise and glare there, with the accompanying traffic, parking, and air pollution, would destroy what peace there is in this neighborhood.
I'm going to have to ask you to, you're already over, but I'll ask you to wrap it up, please.
I'm ready to wrap it up.
Thank you.
The project would allow the fields to be used by non-San Carlos sports clubs. It intends to expand hours of, the hours of play beyond the current 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM hours. Keeping the fields lighted till after 10:00 is unreasonable and not serving San Carlos' children. Does the city intend to host adult leagues from all over in a quiet residential neighborhood filled with young families served by a single bottleneck street? Please, please, stop this abuse now and vote tonight not to, to end the consideration of lights at Stadium Field. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Richard Crone.
Richard Crone, resident of San Carlos.
Richard Krone, resident of San Carlos. The city of San Carlos acknowledged in its settlement agreement in 2010 with Save San Carlos Parks the toxic health risks of using waste rubber from old recycled tires in Highlands Park. That's why the city chose to use natural fill made of cork and coconut husk, not recycled waste rubber. Given our agreement, why would a children's play area that's less than 24 feet from that very field be treated any differently by the city staff? This is one of the 50-pound bags that was used to fill the children's play area. The city staff is referring to the material as recycled SBR rubber, styrofoam, but I can't even pronounce it, synthetic rubber. The fact of the matter is, there's no formal certification, independent test, or government standards for classifying the contents of this bag and the two pallets that were used to fill it. We know one thing for sure, though, that it's sourced from old, ground-up recycled waste tires, a known carcinogen with toxic properties. Save San Carlos Parks observed and provided pictures and video documentation of at least 4,000 pounds of this stuff, of this waste rubber, being installed on December 12th. The waste rubber accounts for approximately 90% of the total installed base in the children's play area. Contrary to the staff report, the waste rubber is mixed into the colored top layer directly exposed to children. And I'll provide pictures and documentation for you tonight. The contractor bragged to us that the top layer, how he mixes the recycled waste rubber with that virgin rubber. Additionally, the waste rubber and the top layer are both mixed with what we estimate to be more than 120 gallons of the toxic resin known as Voromir MR-1165, a lethal isocyanate from Dow Chemical. Health risks documented in the company's own material safety warnings in the packet that I'll give you. If these materials were not considered safe for athletes on our playing field, why does the city staff consider it safe for babies and toddlers in direct contact in the play area? What's more disturbing is why the city staff is deceptively sugar-coating what's installed in their report to you. Their approach in this matter should make you question altogether the staff's true intentions of adding lights at Stadium Field.
Mr. Krone, you're way over. Could you wrap it up? Thank you.
So, we ask that you curtail and terminate this evening the consideration of lights at Stadium Field.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The next speaker I have is Bob Danner.
Thank you. Good evening. I do appreciate that our city council has given this opportunity to the community to speak out on what is becoming just another very divisive issue. Our community has been shaped over the many years that I've lived here by the involvement of citizens such as you see here tonight expressing their views. Now, what is before you is not an issue of lights by itself. It's also an artificial turf issue. At the initial meeting on the EIR input, I spoke that the only proper evaluation of the lighting proposal required consideration of the playing surface, and this is from my many years' experience with youth soccer. Increased playing time under the lights during the colder winter months when grass does not grow nor rejuvenate itself well will result in degradation and failure of the playing surface. This is not being properly addressed to the EIR at the instruction of the city. The result is, in a year or two, will be, we need artificial turf to make the project viable, contrary to what is being presented to you in the report. Well, that's not a popular issue in our community, as evidenced by the controversy over turf at Crestview Park, the North Crestview Park debacle, the turf on the school district fields, and even the most recent grand jury report. And I encourage the city to read beyond the crowd-mover aspect. This draft EIR was presented for comment to the community at a P&amp;R meeting where the commissioners were not permitted to make any recommendation. After all, the P&amp;R Commission is an advisory body appointed by this council. That's just an embarrassment. A controversy like this deserves sunshine and discussion. And here we are tonight with a staff report before you that is incomplete, contradictory, and very disingenuous. One does not build community by dividing the community, nor by letting divisive issues get out of hand, nor by lack of transparency and openness by the city, all of which demonstrate a lack of understanding of the many diverse elements that make up this great community we all live in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ann Tang.
Council, if Ms. Ann Tang is unable to be here this evening herself...
Okay. Okay, she has something to read? Sure.
She does.
Go ahead.
She says, "I'm sorry I couldn't be here in person tonight, but I wanted to get my comments on the record. What is happening at Highlands Park is a violation of the 2010 settlement agreement. I was part of that agreement, which the city made when the court ruled in Save San Carlos Parks' favor that there were issues that were not adequately addressed by the city at Highlands Park, particularly traffic and noise. The court ruled that the use of artificial turf and lights at Highlands would worsen an already dangerous level of traffic and noise and put an undue burden on those who live near the park. A number of measures were agreed and put in place to help with traffic and noise: staggering practices, not starting games before 8:00 AM, adding drop-off areas, and carpool parking. The city is now proposing to remove all those measures. Why? Nothing has changed, and now the city is also requesting the addition of lights on Stadium Field, which, if approved, will increase the level of traffic and noise significantly. The measures are barely adequate today in mitigating the huge number of cars that arrive and depart as multiple practices and games start and finish. Removing the current restrictions on Highlands Field and adding lights at Stadium Field would be a safety nightmare. As the court found in 2010, the mitigation measures were necessary. They are still necessary today. No additional routes in and out of the neighborhood have been built, and the usage continues to increase. The city gave citizens their word that they would mitigate these issues. The restrictions have not hindered usage of the field nor created hardships that the city cannot manage. Removing the restrictions when nothing has changed should not be allowed." I would also like to make a second point. The Parks and Rec Department is being disingenuous when they say they only want lights at Stadium to increase usage. Their primary argument for putting turf at Highlands was that natural grass could not withstand the increased usage that the lights enabled. The lights only make financial sense when coupled with turf, something the city has repeatedly argued. The city is being deliberately misleading by saying they are not considering turf at Stadium. They just want to break the project into two pieces to make it less controversial. How can we trust anything Parks and Rec tells us?
Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. My name is Mark Alexander. I've been a homeowner on Coleman Court since 1983, was a close personal friend of Frank Coleman, who developed Coleman Court and lived on Coleman Court, and can remember when San Carlos was a relatively close-knit community and a person could actually find a parking spot on Laurel Street. Well, fast forward to the present day and time, and now certain factions want to change the neighborhood tranquility and calm I've cherished and enjoyed for 35 years into an environment more in similarity to having Pack Bell Stadium in my backyard with the same noise, traffic, litter, and lights. The city of San Carlos has by its nefarious actions and deceitful tactics in its pursuit of this ill-fated proposal to light Highlands Park have done a great disservice not only to the residents of San Carlos, but to themselves. And now their collective integrities, agendas, and motives are being placed under scrutiny and into question. Only the collective awareness and due diligence of the Save San Carlos Parks members brought into light the toxic materials that the city of San Carlos was negligently, purposefully installing and exposing, the most vulnerable members of our city too, the children. Then there is the city's total blatant disregard of the 2010 agreement of no lights at Highlands Park. In addition to compounding their errors in wasteful use of taxpayers' monies, the incomplete, biased, and flawed Environmental Impact Report. Three of the greatest rights I have as a citizen of the United States and a resident of San Carlos is my voice, my vote, and my pocketbook. And I'm fully committed to use all three to prevent my little piece of heaven on Coleman Court being destroyed and turned into a million watts of lighted hell. I don't believe there is anyone in this room, nor any member of the board seated before me, that would support a project, any project, that would dramatically and devastatingly reduce the value of their home, bring increased crowds, noise, litter, traffic into their neighborhoods, and turn their collective nighttime tranquility into something more akin to living under the lights of Pack Bell Park versus living in the city of San Carlos. To be in support of such a project would be supremely disingenuous and quintessentially Lights.
Thanks for your comments, sir. Next speaker card I have is Jeff Klein.
I wanted to touch on three different points against putting lights at Highlands Park. First is property values. I've been a professional appraiser for 15 years. I've been involved in litigation cases regarding properties around BART, properties around the San Jose Arena, properties around high schools wanting to put in lights. And at least 100 homes will be affected by this. And just a quick scan of Zillow, that's probably $200 million in real estate. When you have external obsolescence like that, it could be a 5% to 10% impact, or $10 to $20 million. Huge, huge, huge impact. I also wanted to point out the parking. My calculations of reading the code shows that we're deficient by at least 42 spaces based on the amount of seating that's available in both fields and the tennis courts and the picnic areas and all the different areas of seating. According to the code, there's got to be at least one space for four seats. And you can see pictures — this was done in 2008 before the mitigation, showing how dangerous it is around the park. So I want to submit those. And then finally, the last meeting that was held by the Parks and Rec Commission, all the citizens that spoke were against lights at Highlands Park, and even the commissioner's comments were against lights at Highlands Park. I don't understand why the city council is going against what the Parks and Rec Commission had their comments. They thought that this was not a good idea, that this was a complete waste of money. And why have a Parks and Rec Commission on a subject like this if you're not going to listen to them? There wasn't a single comment from the public or a single comment from the Parks and Rec Department that was in favor of putting lights at Highlands Park. So that's why.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Last speaker card I have is Greg Harris.
Newby talked about demand. She said that there are over 8,000 students or athletes that use the fields. I'm sure that's multiple counting of people that are playing in multiple leagues. It sure seems like it's the same people out there every night playing soccer on the field. But what she didn't tell us was how much demand was going to be created if we accept playing of field hockey and lacrosse. She said that that's the demand. So my question is, why are we investing all of this money to spend on field hockey and lacrosse to support an unnamed quantity? We didn't hear how many people this would represent. We didn't hear how big the demand was at a time when the quality of how we take care of our park has never been lower. Sunday morning, walking my dog, I found a hypodermic needle. Sunday morning, walking my dog, I found a pod of used alcohol cans. On a regular basis, and Ms. Newby has a long file, the lights have been left on all night long. It's a regular occurrence, happened just recently, for two days straight. You want to save money? You can go to LED. You could just turn the lights on as well. There's trash out there. Little League redid their batting cage. They did that three years ago? The trash from that still sits there, three years. We haven't taken care of the park that we have. People are regularly arriving at the field at 7:00 AM on Saturday and Sunday morning, cheering, blowing whistles, making noise. This is not what the spirit of the agreement in 2010 was. This was about cooperating. This was about letting the park be used, but not to abuse the neighbors. The traffic is more intense than ever. There is no field, no park in San Carlos that has three baseball fields. There's no park in San Carlos that has two soccer fields. There's no park in San Carlos that has as much traffic today, and frankly, we're not doing a very good job with the traffic we have today. The idea of increasing capacity and spending our valuable resources on that to satisfy a couple of teams seems crazy. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Harris. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? I'm sorry, Karen Molinarie, sorry, have the stick in front of me.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I have to say, I'm going to repeat comments I shared at Parks and Rec. I'm thrilled the city is looking for ways to increase playing time, but I am saddened that as a city and community, we are still looking for ways to increase playing time. San Carlos has been park and field space deficient for 20-plus years. The priority needs to be finding and creating new park space. We are heavily investing in our economic, business, and residential development, yet we aren't keeping pace with regards to community amenities like parks, community centers. This influx of new residents and employees will only further tap our already overused fields. We need to focus on new parks. I take issue with the EIR statement that there isn't any opportunity for new parks. I believe that is inaccurate and lacking forward-thinking and creative planning. As a public citizen, many of you know I've lobbied you to create extra park space in East San Carlos. They're park deficient. You've been given resources to do that. That needs to become a priority. I feel that that's a higher priority over eking out a few more hours each day over a few months each year on an already overused field and park space. I do think that if this EIR moves forward, it must include consideration of synthetic turf. It is very reasonably foreseeable that that can happen. And if you don't do that, you will be basically segmenting the project. And in SEQA, you can't do that. So you have it in your Parks and Rec master plan that says likelihood of synthetic turf. Your Parks and Rec commissioners say it's likely. You have an example on Highlands Field that it is likely. It is really disingenuous to say that it's not likely to happen at Stadium. I would really like to see if this EIR moves forward that synthetic turf be added for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. As I indicated at the beginning, we will not be acting on this. This is informational in nature, and no action is going to be taken at this meeting on any of these items. But thank you all for your comments, and they're all in the record. Crystal has them in the record, and we'll move on for the next step. Okay, the next item on agenda is 9A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving recommended improvements included in the pedestrian safety improvement plan for San Carlos Avenue.
Evening, council. I'm Tara Peterson. Before you this evening, we have consideration of pedestrian safety improvements for San Carlos Avenue. We are returning to council after having received feedback in August on the various improvements that we had recommended at the time. We're now asking that council approve the recommendations we have this evening. We're now asking that council approve the recommendations we have this evening that were developed based on council comments and further study. We'll not be asking council to fund a project at this time simply to consider the recommendations. And with that, I'd like to introduce our consultant, Steve Weinberger, from W Trans, who will present this topic.
Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. So my plan for you tonight is not to cover past efforts, but to show you the new information. But we'll review the goals once again, remind you what your feedback was, and then go into our updated recommendations, both for the corridor and for some intersection focus areas on San Carlos Avenue. And then we've developed a phasing plan and cost estimates for those recommendations. So these were the goals that your staff presented to us in evaluating San Carlos Avenue from Beverly to Prospect, focusing on mobility and safety, both for motorized and non-motorized users, to really look at the pedestrian facility, since there was known sort of missing sidewalks on that section, but to look at it in terms of the full facility for all users of the corridor, looking at solutions that promoted livability in healthy communities, and to go through a public process, which we've been, second time we've been back to you, and also to the Traffic Committee. This again is the corridor from left to the west, the Beverly intersection, which is stop-controlled on the side street movements. You have your traffic signal at Devonshire, the other traffic signal at Alameda de las Pulgas. There are pedestrian crosswalks that are what are called uncontrolled crosswalks, are not controlled by the traffic signal, at the Arendelle School parking lot, there in the center of the screen, and also one over at Prospect. Those were two focus areas, since those were the two sort of unprotected crosswalks in the corridor. So reviewing your feedback, you asked about, sort of, what are the benefits of sidewalks in general? And there was comments about the phasing. So we did look back at the implementation and phasing of the various elements of the project. You did also have specific comments about the intersection of Alameda de las Pulgas, the Cortoleras intersection, and the Prospect. And I'll show you visuals of each of those three in the updated recommendations. Just in terms of your question about benefits of sidewalks, Federal Highway Administration has provided some documentation. I think the key takeaway here is the larger bullet in the middle. Statistically, that roadways without sidewalks are twice as likely to have a pedestrian crash as streets with sidewalks. Also, the documentation from FHWA does discuss the, with sidewalks, you can potentially create more users walking on the corridor than if there weren't. So I think these are all self-explanatory. There were some issues that you brought up that we discussed with staff, and they didn't necessarily make the recommendations, but wanted to cover those. One was about crash barriers. I think the cost of physical barriers at various places for the corridor made a cost prohibitive. We did look at pedestrian refuge islands, given the width of the corridor, made that difficult. There was discussion about U-turn movements at Prospect. I think in the design phase, that can be addressed, and I'll talk about that when I get to Prospect. And just physical delineators in the travel lane or sidewalk in general. Again, just the raised physical delineators, and used in a large amount also can cause some difficulties in the corridor. Okay, I'm going to go through the updated corridor improvement recommendations. And again, I'll be talking them in terms of the three segments on the corridor. Segment one, on the left, Beverly to Devonshire. And then the center, segment two, from Devonshire to Alameda de las Pulgas. Essentially, that's, middle segment is between those two existing traffic signals. And then segment three, from Alameda to Prospect, closest to City Hall here. So again, there's the three segments, and one of the focuses of the recommendations was to complete the sidewalks on both sides of the street for the corridor, and I'll get into more details on that. Okay, starting on segment one, again, we're to the west, from Beverly to Devonshire. This is the segment where there, as you get into Beverly, there are already existing the charrow bicycle markers. There's no bike lanes, there's not enough room for bike lanes. But we have room, there's room for bike lanes, obviously, to the east of here. So we're using that, what we call greenback charrows, or essentially green squares with the charrows, to transition between that, the charrow Class III facility that exists to the Class II facility. And typical of all these segments, there is mostly a pedestrian walkway on the south side of the street that is just asphalt path that's separated by a berm. And then on the north side, we have a number of sections with missing sidewalks, if you remember. And a lot of the areas that you would need to create the sidewalk have been, over the years, reclaimed by residents with landscaping, some retaining walls, that physically, and if you're going to provide that sidewalk, needs to go in that space. So we've identified all those areas to create that continuous sidewalk on both sides of the street. So segment one does recommend some modifications to some driveways and retaining walls and landscaping to create that sidewalk on the north side of San Carlos. And then on the south side, essentially replacing the existing asphalt path with a raised concrete sidewalk. So that's segment one. And I'll get into the intersections here after I cover each of the pedestrian sidewalk improvements. Segment two, we actually, there is room to do a bit of widening on San Carlos Avenue between Arendelle and Alameda de las Pulgas, so you can fit a center to a left turn lane. And you'll see that when I show you the intersection with Phelps by the school. On the north side, again, there's tree removal, driveway modifications on the north side in order to create the new sidewalk, and that's between Devonshire and Arendelle. There is right-of-way available between Arendelle and Phelps to install a new sidewalk on the north side of the street. And again, typical of all three sections, replacing that asphalt path on the south side with a new raised concrete sidewalk. And then segment three, similar to the others, driveway modifications, potentially some landscaping areas on the north side of the street that are all within the existing public right-of-way to fit the new sidewalk in. There is a retaining wall near Sycamore that then has a sidewalk next to it that is not, doesn't meet accessibility standards because there's a slope down to the travelway from the sidewalk, a drop-off. So we have the cost to clean that up. And then, of course, the AC path, again, replacing that with a sidewalk. So I'm going to move on to the updated intersection improvements. First, we're at the Arendelle School parking lot and the Phelps intersection. If you remember, we did a lot of evaluation of traffic volumes at the Phelps intersection. It does meet warrants for a traffic signal. So we have presented this before there. The existing crosswalk that's there at the parking lot does have the rectangular flashers now, and the accessible sidewalk that is just limited to where the crossing is, and looking downstream at the Phelps intersection, the congestion that occurs there. So as I said, the Phelps intersection does warrant a signal, so we have designed this section to move the crosswalk over to the Phelps intersection and provide sidewalk, new sidewalk frontage on the north side between Phelps and the parking lot. The new center turn lane here, which traffic would use to turn left onto Phelps, could also be used to turn left into the parking lot, as well as left out of the parking lot. So you'd have full access of the parking lot movements and a signalized intersection at Phelps. There would be no sidewalks on Phelps, it's too narrow, which is why we've put the sidewalk on the north side, so pedestrians can cross at the signalized intersection and then walk over on the outer rim of the parking lot to access school. Okay, the Alameda intersection, we've talked before about the two sort of free right turn lanes that cause some pedestrian safety concerns. It is a bit of an awkward oriented intersection. We cleaned up the, here's that northbound right to San Carlos Avenue. And we do have, you do have conflicting sort of messages with a yield marking which the car is on top of with the signal, are two conflicting traffic messages. And this is the right turn from eastbound San Carlos to turn right onto Alameda. Again, just a very tight and skewed right turn. So what we've shown and cleaned up here is essentially to eliminate those two islands and create a more standard T-intersection with sort of squared-off right turns. That would be made, you can make those right turns, stop, right turn on red, as you do other intersections, but a much cleaner intersection for safety. And the yellow areas that are crosshatched is pavement that can be regained for other uses, aesthetics landscaping. The new sidewalks are just outside that, those yellow areas. You see the green path and the bike lane, that's the new standard for where you have bike lanes traveling through an intersection where you have a conflicting movement. So that left turn from San Carlos onto Alameda can occur when through traffic is coming the other direction. So you want to put that green pavement where the cyclist might be, where the left turn will cross it. And the idea with the green paint is not to put it everywhere. It does wear out, so to limit it and use it in more strategic areas than everywhere for bikes. Okay, the Cortoleras intersection, which right now has that very flared-out movement coming off Cortoleras, a lot of sort of what we call sort of dead pavement zone area. We are showing this to be squared off. It's very subtle in the striping changes, but the idea is to eliminate that higher-speed free right movement. And you see the bike lane sort of tracking through the intersection here. Some of that could be green paint. And the, I was going to mention, there's also monuments to the entrance to the neighborhood, and this has been designed so those will be left intact and not impacted. Okay, then finally, Prospect Street, which it's an offset intersection. From a pedestrian standpoint, is quite difficult. A lot of conflicting movements here, and sort of awkward configuration with the offset of the intersection. So we presented this idea before, we've kind of, this, you can see the offset, this is looking from that north leg towards the offset south leg. And the idea here was to simplify things, eliminate all the conflicting turning movements that are occurring. So we've maintained, if you look at the south leg first, so we maintain all movements because that is a court, it's their only access. So they have full movements into and out of, from both directions, San Carlos Avenue. The Prospect Street on the north, we have, you see in yellow in the center, we've provided a raised island, which overlaps, which prohibit, that makes that access a right turn in, right turn out only. And the thought is, is that traffic that wants to turn left in or left out can do that one block over and has those options. And pedestrian crossings is significantly enhanced with the raised crossing here. And we've put, we've bulbed out the sidewalks on both sides to shorten that. This is a transition from where you have three lanes to the five-lane section, higher speed transitional traffic. So this, I want to create a pinch point to, you know, keep traffic moving, but slow it down here. So we think we've achieved that with the islands. And then again, you see some use of green paint where there are conflicting movements with vehicles. Okay, the phasing and cost estimates, we've broken this into six pieces. The last five and six you see are the sidewalk sections, which are, have the most cost. Those can even be broken out into seven pieces with each segment being a separate project, if that's the way the city wants to handle it. But the intersections themselves can be done as separate projects. That Phelps intersection near the school, with that section in front of the school, is shown as the first priority project, discussions with city staff, that's what they would like to push forward first. The Alameda intersection improvements can be done separately. There is some coordination that needs to happen with the Alameda intersection traffic signal and the new traffic signal at Phelps, given their proximity. So that would happen with the new signal going in at Phelps. But the Prospect and Cortoleras are shown down line at three. The bicycle pavement delineation improvements are shown as a separate project. Again, these can be done separately or grouped together. And finally, the cost, updated cost estimates. We do have a typo on the bottom, by the way. That is just total cost for everything. But the first three are the sidewalk improvements. As I said, there's a lot of work within the public right-of-way to create the sidewalks. North side, always more cost than the south, because the south is an existing AC path that needs to be upgraded, but don't have to deal with retaining walls and such that you have on the north side. So each segment I covered, shown totals about $5.3 million for those three, and those intersection improvements, the traffic signals, the islands, all the island work and such, total about $1.4 million for that total. That's all I have, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. My first one is about the signal at Phelps. So I think we noted this at the previous meeting, that, you know, there's a signal at Alameda, and then there's a signal at Phelps, or proposed signal at Phelps, which is the next intersection, which are pretty close together. Have we looked at what impact having to signalize intersections so close together will have on traffic flow?
We did. When we do operational analysis, we have a simulation program. And what we're recommending to make that work is having the two signals interconnected, so they work in tandem. So much like you do say at an interchange, where you have a signal, two signals close together, always work in tandem. So you are utilizing that space and having the phasing work together, so there's no inefficiency. So it will work, and we have checked the traffic flow.
Okay. So even if, when they're phased together, it would have no detrimental impact to traffic flow whatsoever?
You can make the two intersections meet city standards in terms of level of service and delay. And... And I don't, I can...
I guess, the point of view, I know you guys do simulations. That particular stretch of road at peak time can get all, can get backed up all the way up the street so that the traffic isn't moving at all. And I'm just wondering, in that kind of a scenario, for somebody trying to move through San Carlos Avenue, is having those two signals there going to increase travel time?
Yeah. There won't be, traffic flow won't be any worse than it is today. The, the traffic signal at Phelps does eliminate some queuing that right now is waiting on the road to turn left but can't. So the, the traffic signal will get that traffic off, allowing sort of eastbound traffic to, to move now where now it can't. So there's certainly a give and take between the two, but in my mind and looking at it, it does operate more efficiently with the time and space you have because right now with the Phelps causing delay and backups because traffic is just having difficulty turning onto Phelps and traffic that's turning off Phelps is having difficulty getting out. So...
Okay. The next question I wanted to ask is, you know, the primary, the community that's sort of the primary beneficiary, particularly of the Phelps section, is kids and their parents who walk to Arundel School. And I just wondered what level of communication we've had with the school district? What kind of feedback have we gotten? Have we presented this to the school district staff? Has it been to a school board meeting? Have we talked to Arundel PTA? It seems like, for me, I would want to, I suspect that if we presented this to them, they would be supportive of it, but I just wanted to see what feedback we got back.
Our main contact at the school has been Mindy Hill, the coordinator, the wellness coordinator for the school district. And they were invited for, to both the TNC meetings and spoke, she spoke at the TNC meeting in support of the improvements, realizing that currently there is, there's a problem at the area. So this would be improvement to, for the area.
Okay. All right. Mindy's great. If there is an opportunity to present this as an informational item at a school board meeting, I think it would be a great thing to do because I do think it does have an impact on that community. And then my last question is, and maybe for Grace, it's a question for you. On all of these proposed improvements, have we reached out to the homeowners who are adjacent or within, you know, a very short, to explain to them and to solicit their input about the proposed changes?
We've sent out postcards to the corridor for this meeting as well as previous TNC meetings, so we've heard from them, but we haven't reached out to each property owner yet. That's during, that would be during the design phase when we actually know what specific impact will be for each property because it's, it would be different for each property. And we want to be able to let them know with detail if it's their retaining wall, if it's landscaping, if it's a tree. So we will be reaching out to each particular property owner that's affected.
And then what is, if we approve this tonight, what is the, are there other council actions that we would take, or is it just simply approving the contract?
Tonight is approving the plan. We, we plan to leverage as much grant funding as possible, and that's why the corridor near the school is attractive for grant funding. And as part of the upcoming CIP budget discussion, we'll be bringing back to see which segments we'd want to fund first or want to go first as higher priority. So you'll hear back in terms of, during those venues, times.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krokot?
So I had a few questions before I dropped my water. First one has to do with, if you could go to the, you had a picture that showed things in front of the school with their parking lot. Go back, go back. You just had it.
Oh.
Not a picture, but a...
The aerial?
Yeah, the aerial.
Okay.
And so you were talking about a signal light added at Phelps and then moving the crosswalk and so forth. Is it impossible to have a light that functions that would create essentially a dead zone, a safe zone, all the way from where the current crosswalk is to Phelps Road? Because, the reason I ask that, I know that might sound a little odd in terms of a typical intersection and how to control it. But if you're ever there during the day, either in the morning or in the afternoon when kids are coming to school or leaving school and parents are driving in and out of that parking lot, it's a lot of activity in that area. And I think, I don't know, in my opinion, expecting, if I heard, if I heard you correctly, you're talking about moving that crosswalk from where it is...
Can we see that picture? That would be great.
Down to Phelps.
But can we see the picture?
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And just having had a son go to school there and taking him to school, you know, on a tandem bicycle and so forth, and just being around that area for three, four years, I just don't think that's reasonable expectation for people to change their habits because the focal point for people going to the school is either to go up Phelps Road and drive up and drop off someplace on campus, or a lot of parents just pull into that parking lot and drop their kids off and then go on their way. And the kids do the same thing. They'll go all the way up San Carlos Avenue, for instance, the ones that are coming from the downtown area. And they don't go up Phelps Road. When I took my son on a bicycle, we never went up Phelps Road. We did, we tried it once. It was very dangerous. So we would go all the way up and then pull into the parking lot. Maybe I should shut up and let you answer the question, but what I'm looking for is, you know, whatever distance that is, 200 yard safe zone.
Okay. Couple of comments on the, sort of Phelps traffic volumes. You know, we did data collection for traffic turning in and out of Phelps as well as looking at traffic volumes going in and out of the parking lot. The Phelps location, the traffic volumes there do meet, there are warrants out there, like where do you put in a traffic signal? It's got to have side street volumes up to a certain level, okay? The side street volumes here on Phelps do warrant a traffic signal.
I believe it, yeah.
So, and that's not necessarily school traffic, it's residential traffic too. But, so I just want to make that clear, and we're not expecting school traffic to use Phelps to get to the school. They can, but we also wanted to create with the center turn lane here, a way for parents to have that turn lane to turn into the parking lot as well and pick up and drop off like they do now. So that left turn lane that you see can be used by traffic that's turning left onto Phelps or turning left into the parking lot. As well as traffic in the parking lot that's leaving and wants to turn left, and right now, a difficult movement, would have the center turn lane for a refuge to turn into and then merge over and continue on. So it has a dual purpose there. So just to comment on your idea of the safe zone, I think what you're maybe suggesting, if I can interpret, is, and are you thinking of using traffic signal to stop traffic to let things happen in the center?
Yes, exactly. What I'm thinking of is, for instance, all summer long, Highway 84 has been shut down to one lane. And the way they do that is they have a traffic signal, the whole section that is one lane has a traffic signal at the start, at the one end, and a traffic signal at the other end. And when the light turns green at, you know, one end, you go through and you're driving through this safe zone. It's a single lane.
Yeah.
And so that type of situation, that's what I'm driving at.
Right. And this application is unusual. And essentially, you're talking about creating, taking an intersection and...
Stretching it out.
Stretching it out to have traffic signal lights here and here to stop traffic so nothing gets in between. Nothing getting in the center is, would be difficult. They would have to be, I mean, it would certainly be a more costly, a much more costly signal. And it's, it's not something that we've evaluated, but I would think would cause, you know, a more delay to the corridor in general compared to what we did recommend because...
Let me ask you this. If we approve this tonight, is it still something that could be considered? And I'm not suggesting that it go all the way from where the current crosswalk is to where you have your crosswalk. I'm just saying, especially that parking lot, there's a lot of activity there. And you see kids, you know, running across the street from that parking lot to in front of the home of these folks sitting right here. It's just, it's a busy area in the, in the morning, and especially it seems even more so in the afternoon when kids are getting out of school.
I would think as you get into design to work out some of these issues.
Yeah.
And Grace can comment on that appropriate, but that's not unheard of when you get to the design phase of really fine tuning that traffic signal design.
Okay. All right. Very good. My other question had to do with, let me turn to it, sorry. Oh, so if you could go to the picture of Alameda de Las Pulgas as it comes into the, into San Carlos Avenue, you've got the map where you have the little yellow things right there. Yeah. So I'm curious, is it possible in that design to make it so that the sidewalk, you could still have the ramp and things, so when you come across, for instance, as you're crossing over Alameda de Las Pulgas, going east to west or west to east, you have the handicap ramps, of course. But does the sidewalk itself, couldn't it be in the yellow zone and you use some of this other area for landscaping and offering protection from automobiles to pedestrians?
Absolutely.
Very good.
It's a great idea, and again, design phase, we probably should have shown that option, but you can certainly do like a landscape strip...
Yep.
Around the, that's close to the traffic and push the sidewalk so it's separated, the landscape strip is separating. It's a great idea for the use of that space.
Thank you. And then my, my last question, Cameron hit on it a little bit, but, well, I guess Grace can answer this. If we approve this tonight, how much more outreach will there be to homeowners in the community? Because personally, I feel like, while I'm very happy to see this happening, been on the council a long time, and we've been talking about these kind of improvements the whole time. So it's great to see this, but it's, I don't want to rush it so quickly that we overlook the concerns of people who live on San Carlos Avenue, the people who use San Carlos Avenue a lot because they have kids going to school either here, or even people who have kids going to school at the other end, all the way down to Carlmont. This corridor gets used a lot. And I'd really like to see, and what we didn't see tonight, is a, you know, a map that shows if we were to do all these improvements, this is it. And I think something like that, you know, this is important enough to the community to have something like that on display so the community can see it, absorb it, digest it a little bit, think about it, and provide feedback. And I haven't seen that, to my knowledge, that's not been done. And so I'm all ready to approve this, but I really would like to see some more public outreach.
So currently, we have the design only up to 30%, and that's because it's an overall many, you know, three different segments. But after approval, plan approval, even budgeting, I'm expecting, we're going to budget section by section. We're going to move forward with design section by section. You'll see the design for approval section by section. And when we're at that section doing detailed design, we'll know exactly what effect it would be for each parcel, each property, and we'll have to reach out because we would need to speak with them on how best to address it, restore it back to, I mean, how best to resolve that encroachment, whether it be the wall, the landscaping, or any, any other items.
So if I can understand what we're doing tonight, when we approve, if we approve, it's still somewhat conceptual?
It is conceptual.
It is somewhat conceptual. To my question then, is it possible, even in concept, to put up something that shows the full snake and not the segmented? You know, here's the tail of the snake, here's the middle of the snake, here's the head of the snake. Great. What's it all look like?
Yeah, so we do have 30% plans of the whole stretch.
Okay.
Steve just went segment, segment, describing it, but we do have...
Which I appreciate, but yeah, okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor? If I may, I'd just like to add a little bit to what Grace said, just so it's clear for the public in terms of what this item is. As you recall, this item actually started with the city council having an interest in, in looking at the corridor and hearing from a traffic engineer professional about what types of projects might be beneficial from a safety standpoint, as well as improving traffic through the corridor. But safety was the primary concern of the council when this started. So you might just think of this as a master plan, like for a facility, that has a whole lot of projects in it that may take, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years to implement and are likely to happen in individual project segments that would be, come before the council for budget approval, as well as throughout the design and contract award phase. So there'd be many, many more public meetings involved and much more public outreach that would, that would happen on any of these projects before they actually, you actually saw construction crews out there building them. So this is a very high-level conceptual plan. Thank you. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that was a nice segue, Jeff, into the first of my, or my one question, and then I have an observation to make. I actually, I guess, my question, Jeff, is this. If I look at the resolution that's before us, the last paragraph says, "Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of San Carlos hereby approves the recommended improvements included in the pedestrian safety improvement plan for San Carlos Avenue." Before I heard your comments a moment ago, my instinct was sort of following on what Cameron had said and what Matt had said, is rather than saying approves the recommended improvements, I'd rather vote for something that says approves evaluating and developing plans for the proposed improvements that were presented to us tonight. Perhaps the language is to talk about it as developing a master plan or something like that, but when I read these words, what it says to me is, I just approved spending $7 million. And yeah, I understand you're saying that we'd have contracts come back to us to be let in various phases, but I'd still have hanging over my head, I just approved $7 million. So whether you use my words or something else, is there a way we can tweak the wording here that would give staff the authority that it needs without committing us to necessarily spend every dollar that's on here?
Well, we could turn to our professional wordsmith on that. But one, the way the language is written now, it does not commit you to spending that money. It simply doesn't, it, you couldn't take that action in that form. It just wouldn't work. But, but maybe a better way to say it is rather than approving the specific projects in the plan, you're just approving the plan. It's, it's the same, that's the same type of format that you would use when you're adopting a master plan for a park or a building. You approve the plan, but doesn't mean that you approve all the projects in the plan.
I like that a lot better than, than the way this is worded here. Let me leave that aside because that's obviously up to the council to decide whether or not we want to tweak the, tweak the language. The second item I have, which isn't really so much of a question as it is just an observation that I want to make sure the council is aware of and that staff factors into this going forward. We've heard several times now that sidewalks are, my word, not necessarily what the reports are saying, essential or an essential factor at least in promoting public safety. And that gives me a little bit of pause, not because I don't want to improve public safety, I do. I'm not sure I actually agree with it based on the... I'm not sure I actually agree with it based on the conversations I've had with Jay Walter over the years. But essentially, what I read that as committing us to is that we better plan on budgeting money to build sidewalks everywhere in San Carlos where there aren't currently sidewalks. And we all know that there have been a few neighborhoods that have come to us to actually ask us to build sidewalks, and we've told at least one of them, well, actually, the sidewalks get built by the property owner, so if you want to build sidewalks, feel free. These presentations, these statements that are in the reports paint a somewhat different picture. And again, I'm not, the cautionary note here is, I just want to make sure that if that's the road we want to go down, if that's the road staff really believes we do need to be going down, then there are some very significant budgetary implications to that. Personally, based on what I know, what, and what I've learned, what I would be more comfortable with is something that says that staff will use, you know, we will pursue improving pedestrian safety as efficiently as we can, using whatever tools and resources and approaches are appropriate, which is short of committing us to building sidewalks all through San Carlos. And again, if we really believe that safety requires sidewalks, which is what I sort of see in these words here, so be it. But if that's not what we are saying, then we ought to change things a little bit. I'd be interested in, Jeff, your reaction to that, and maybe Greg wants to say something as well.
Well, I think reviewing the current resolution, I think there's two approaches you can, we could try to wordsmith it tonight and delete the reference to the specific improvements because we're not really at that level yet, as I understand it from staff. Or we could perhaps redraft the resolution and bring it back to you on the consent calendar next time. That just clarifies, based on the direction that you give us tonight. So, I mean, as far as procedurally how we want to go forward on it. But I hear your point about how we don't want to commit, so I think that's kind of the main point. You want to, the wording of the resolution, you have some discomfort because it talks about approving the specific recommendations.
To be clear, Greg, the resolution doesn't say that. It's just all of the presentation material, or elements of the presentation materials say that. And I'm not opposed to that. It's contrary to what I've been told by experts over the years. But if that's the direction we're going in, I just want to be clear about that. If it's not, I want to be clear about that, too.
My feedback on that, Councilmember Olbert, is that this is a plan specific for San Carlos Avenue, so extrapolating it out to the rest of the community and other streets, I certainly understand that's the reality of what folks might attempt to do in the community, but this study's speaking to San Carlos Avenue. That said, you know, we know from past conversations with residents throughout the community who often ask for sidewalks, they are often also the same residents who then oppose us putting sidewalks in because the major reality of sidewalks is often, you know, where you think of, or where a resident thinks of as the end of the street and sidewalk and public right-of-way and the beginning of their property is actually oftentimes not the legal reality of the public right-of-way. In some instances, the public right-of-way comes much closer to the front of somebody's house. And that means that we, the city would have the right to build public facilities in that area, but it would require taking out, you know, retaining walls, landscaping, part of what people think of as their property. And so they tend to have a different take on their desire to have sidewalks when we get there. And that's why I say, you know, this project in particular, if we begin to look at sidewalks, if that's something that the council does want to consider as a project going forward in the future, when you have the opportunity to do that, the outreach to the community will be paramount, because I have a suspicion from past experience that that won't be that well-received.
Fair enough. And I, to Greg's point, I think, and your point, if personally, if the council was willing to accept that minor tweak, well, I think it was a minor tweak to the language in the resolution, I believe that that would actually, it makes the debate we're having here a little bit moot because it says we're going to revisit it, and we're going to look at whatever solutions look best in any given situation, so.
And I support the suggested language change. I think it serves the purpose of this particular item and what it's trying to accomplish.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some questions for Steve, some for Grace. You mentioned that one of the slides that the sidewalks, you know, actually, I guess, affect driver behavior, is that right? In other words, is the, does the sight of sidewalks actually cause drivers to slow down when they, or is it the sight of sidewalks and pedestrians on sidewalks that cause people to actually slow down? Does it actually change their behavior? That's really what I'm asking.
Yeah. I think the answer to that is subjective, but in my experience, a vertical concrete curb driving next to, as opposed to a dirt shoulder and no curb, the presence of that vertical curb in general does cause drivers to slow, to drive a little slower than if there were just a dirt shoulder with no concrete curb. Now, put a, pedestrians, you know, walking frequently on that sidewalk will cause drivers to see more activity and, you know, brings the speed down another mile an hour or two. Put a large group of pedestrians, like a big, you know, school starting, you know, I'm not talking about every driver on the road, but most drivers will bring down even further. So all those factors sort of are building blocks to, if you want to create a slow street, I mean, put a lot of pedestrians on it, on a sidewalk. In my experience, those are the, where you don't have width constraints, or say, vertical humps or things like that, but just a basic two-lane street and not constrain the width, the things that are going to slow down sidewalks and pedestrians on that sidewalks. But I do believe that the vertical concrete curb does have an effect on drivers, as opposed to you think about just a dirt shoulder.
Okay. Can you go to that picture of Alameda and San Carlos with the yellow?
Yeah.
Parts to it? I was just a little confused by that. There. Is that yellow area currently in existence?
So the yellow area is existing pavement that would be reclaimed under this scenario. So the two islands, let me just...
It's driving pavement currently?
Correct. So you see the two...
There we go.
Yeah, the two islands.
I see.
If you look to the right, there's the old crosshatched area. That is existing pavement that has been striped. And then the sidewalk, existing sidewalk, which is mostly covered by trees here, that's the, a line to the right of the yellow, that's the existing sidewalk. So we're reclaiming that pavement area, eliminating the two islands. This case shows the sidewalk pushed out, but as was noted, you can, you can make that a landscape strip around the corner with the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. You mentioned those monuments that, on either side of Cordillares and San Carlos Avenue, I think it's, they say Britton Park. Not that I'm suggesting it.
You can see one right here in the view on the right.
Yeah. Yeah, Britton Park. You said they could be left intact.
Yes.
And my question is, and I don't want to, you know, create heresy here, but would they be better if potentially they were moved back a little bit? Or is it not necessary?
I don't think it's necessary. I think they're sort of nice landmarks. We did this design, sort of making sure we left that space alone. It can be part of the design phase if there's thought of a better place for them. I mean, monuments like that, I think, for the driving public are sort of nice features. And again, it's a sort of a mental reminder, you're coming into a neighborhood, and maybe, you know, the neighborhood wants to push them out a little bit more into the road. And, you know, you can certainly do that. We assume they would be staying where they are.
All right. One thing that wasn't brought up, a resident emailed me this, this question. He lives on the dead-end part of Prospect. And he said that when he comes out of Prospect, because of the way the traffic is, there are cars parked on San Carlos Avenue very close to the intersection, and he felt that it would be better for the sightlines if the, you know, red paint was extended more on either side so that, you know, the sightlines were improved. Is that something that you looked at?
You know, we looked at what you see in the image here. So if you're talking, so here's the south leg, which the one that he's talking about in your email. Is he talking about to the left of, or to the right?
If you're coming out of Prospect, go to San Carlos Avenue from the, you know, the dead-end part.
Right.
He was talking about on the south side of San Carlos Avenue, west, the southwest corner there.
That would be maybe just out of view here on the very bottom left. So, I mean, we assume parking was going to remain there, but as part of this design, and again, it's, it's a concept at 30% level, you would certainly get into things like, do you need to prohibit parking in any more spaces than you have now? So again, a more detailed design issue.
So that's something that potentially could be part of it?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think I got one more for you and then a couple for Grace. You got me thinking about that electric light at Phelps. With a left-hand turn lane with a signal, is that likely to incentivize more people to take a left-hand turn on Phelps rather than, you know, use some other, maybe turn into the Rundle School parking lot or something like that? Because now they have a signal, they can make a left-hand turn and not worry about, you know, break in the traffic or worry about getting hit?
That's possible. If you, if I can scroll back to that image, the amount of storage space is, you know, there is a limit to it. So it, okay. There is a limit to that, and it could, it could certainly, you know, attract drivers that need to get to the school using it. But I also think about the amount of green time that's going to be given because our space is limited, so you also don't want to give that as much green time as it wants. So there's a way to use the signal timing to limit the amount of traffic that uses it. And I think that needs to be part of the signal design and timing here is consideration of the queue. And I think if you limit it, I think, and traffic has a, you know, maybe just as an easy time to turn left in the parking lot as it is waiting for the next cycle to turn left. So I think you can use the signal timing to potentially discourage that increase in traffic here.
Okay. I think one of my other questions is probably, it's sort of a combination of you and Grace because it involves this, this public process that we've all been talking about. When Mayor Griselli and I were on the Four Corners Committee, we had a couple of public meetings where there were models that were shown to people, and lots of people came to the meeting and they were able to see these alternatives. Is that something that you've envisioned that, not that you build a 3D model, but although that's not really a bad idea, but, or maybe have some sort of, you know, visual presentation where you would have, you know, sort of a 3D simulation? Is that something that you've thought about to be part of this process?
Actually, W. Trans is the consultant for Four Corners as well, and I've been to one of the public meetings. When we go down to actual design of each segment, we'll have much more detailed aerials like this, and also detail property scope-based impacts that we can show, and we'll have public meetings with that, with the neighborhood, and show them exactly what they're, what they're looking at, what we're proposing, how it would impact them. So yes, definitely, public meetings, very similar to the Four Corners public meetings. I think they had three, so, public meetings, yeah.
All right. And then I didn't hear, maybe it was mentioned when I was out of the room. Assuming we were to approve this tonight, whether it's a plan or it's a, you know, improvements or whatever, what's your vision of the timeline for this? And I'm not talking about all three sections, but let's just say the first section. Does that depend on grant funding? Does it depend on how much money we as a council allocate to the Public Works budget?
So we've already begun submitting for grants. One of them is the TA grant for the Phelps segment of it, and the discussion will come back as part of the CIP budget session, so that would be another time we talk about it. If we, and that grant is anticipated in March, we'll get some results on that budget session. The budget starts in July, so I think by July, we'll know which section we want to first budget for.
Okay.
Their design and so forth.
And I forgot to add, great presentation. Thank you. That's all I have.
I just have one quick question, Steve. Could you go to the Prospect one again, please? The proposed. Proposed, yeah, proposed one. There you go. So if you're coming, if you're on the upper Prospect and you're coming down, in other words, you're going south and you come to the street, you're not going to be able to take the left-hand turn.
That's correct.
Are you going to be able to flip into that left-hand turn lane and make a U-turn?
That is not the intention. If you might remember, when we first presented this, we did not, it looked a little bit different, but we wanted to make sure we had full access to the lower half.
Sure.
But the idea here would be not to allow U-turns in that left-turn lane. And one way, and right now, probably physically, a car can make a U-turn there. One way physically to prevent it is if you look on the lower half of the crosswalk, we've had those triangular yellow creating, bulging out. If you think about extending that pushout of the street there...
So if I'm on Prospect, I don't, and I want to go to the El Camino, I don't want to come to Alameda. I have to go some, I have to go back up another street or go down, in other words, go down another couple, I don't have the map here, but go down a couple of other streets.
Couple other options, the streets that come down.
So basically, I just have to reverse because that left-hand turn's going to be eliminated. Okay. All right. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Yes, please come up. You have to come up here and later on, fill out a form so that we'll get your name. Just hand it to the clerk later.
Your name is Ron.
That's fine. Just come on up, Ron. No problem. Just fill out a form later on. You can walk back that way and then give it to the clerk, it'll be fine. Thank you. No, you, that's fine. Go, I'm sorry. Apologize. Go ahead. Shoot.
I live on 1989 San Carlos Avenue.
Okay.
And I was talking about Phelps.
Mm-hmm.
Turn into a rental to go that way.
Mm-hmm.
Cars come around through the, through the bike lane, and I mean, they just, they don't, they don't slow down. Instead of going, and then it's supposed to, when you go down past my house...
You're supposed to turn right to go around the corner?
And then they just... Kids are walking so close to the bus stop there that their cars almost hit them every morning. Stop sign at Phelps, they should make sure that no one turns around circumventing the people turning left to go to the school.
Well, certainly, like I said, we're going to get into the design later on. This is just a conceptual one, but yeah, good, point well-taken, so.
I'm worried about the kids walking along the street there.
No, I understand. Understand. Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Bob Young? Hey, you can just give it to the clerk, that'd be great. Welcome, Mr. Young.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Bob Young, been a resident here for about 40 years, near this neighbor here. When I heard the survey done sometime last year, they made some recommendations, none of which... of which, I think, talked about a stoplight on Phelps. I don't think it'll be a benefit to anybody, and it's, at least now, if the cars that are stopped at the Alameda, by the time they get to our houses, it breaks, we can get out of the driveway. But if you have another stoplight in the middle of that, it's going to be very difficult in the morning and afternoons to get out of there. One of the other comments was that the walkway, a little bit north where the school parking lot is, has flashing yellow lights. They recommended putting in red lights because that means stop. Because if anybody's ever watched children try to go across there, they, cars don't stop, they keep going. The other thought was, I don't know if any of the council members have ever walked from Beverly to the Alameda on the sidewalks either side, you should do that and see how bad it is. There's very few places that have any pavement. Usually, it's dirt and rocks, and it's not level. And I think a curb, although I wouldn't like it in front of my house, but, because you've got to go up and over it to get into a driveway. But I believe that would be a helpful benefit to the children and parents and people that walk along that walkway.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Young. Appreciate it. Again, we're going to have a lot more meetings on all this, so it's not going to be done tomorrow, as they say. But we wanted to get at least the plan out there. Okay.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, based on the comments, I actually had another question for the consultant.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we put the picture up that shows Phelps?
Oh, okay.
The intersection, right, yeah, one of these type of things, but. Almost there. There we go. Okay. So if I'm understanding correctly, I just want to make sure that this got factored in. If you look in the upper right-hand corner of this picture, so there are a bunch of houses along there, and I think what I heard one of the, one of our residents say is, if we put another traffic light in at Phelps, particularly if it's coordinated with the one at Alameda, that when the traffic flow is very heavy, it's going to be very difficult to get in and out of their driveways. And I just wanted to get your sense of whether that got factored in, how that gets factored into the analysis. I mean, I could almost see a situation where the traffic is bad enough in the morning where somebody might get locked in for 10, 15 minutes, depending on how the traffic flow works.
Well, I think it also depends if they're turning right or left out of their driveway.
Granted, yes, yes.
It's an easier time turning right than left. You know, it depends on the direction, and I think with a traffic signal, you are going to have gaps in traffic. You're going to have a queue of traffic being served, cleared out, things change, a gap, traffic then is then returning through there. And I think that why we've recommended the interconnection between the two signals is so the signals kind of have the flexibility to do whatever the city wants them to do. If that's create a gap for residents, if we look at the simulation later in the design and say it's going to be more difficult for residents to pull out, we can do something with the timing between those two to help them.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Okay, gentlemen, what do you want to do on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to adopt Resolution 2018.
Dash 14.
Dash 14, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the, I'm going to make this edit here, approving the pedestrian safety improvement plan for San Carlos Avenue and having the resolution reworded in that last paragraph to reflect that. In other words, incorporating the discussion I was having with Jeff and Greg.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved in second. Any discussion? Staff have the wording? Okay, great. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, thank you. Thank you for the comments from the audience. 9B, consideration of adopting a resolution limiting the 50% city cost share reimbursement to sidewalk repairs that are part of the city's annual sidewalk repair program project, not allowing reimbursements for private repairs and not allowing reimbursements for any work performed prior to January 1st, 2018. Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, council. Tara Peterson. Back in March of 2017, the council approved changes to the sidewalk program. Those included increasing the threshold for repairs from 1/4 of an inch to 3/4 of an inch, no longer using the orange paint to indicate defects, and also sharing the costs with property owners of 50%, up to $60,000 annually. As staff considered the implications of these changes, a few additional questions arose that we need your input on this evening. I'm going to now introduce City Engineer Grace Lee. She'll walk you through these changes and recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Grace Lee, City Engineer. The city has a sidewalk repair program. When the city gets notified of a sidewalk defect, staff will go out, evaluate the location, and notify the adjacent property owner. The property owner has, can choose to hire his or her own contractor, obtain permits and do the repair, or be part of the city's program and have the city's contractor do the repair. On March 13, 2017, council made some modifications to the program, including increasing the sidewalk repair threshold from 1/4 of an inch to 3/4 of an inch, no longer using orange paint to mark defects, and sharing 50% of the costs of the sidewalk repair with the property owners, up to a maximum of $60,000 annually. As of March, the program has been put on hold partly due to staff turnover and also the need for some program policy clarification. One clarification needed has to do with eligible repairs. Staff's interpretation is that eligible repairs are only limited to those that meet the city's repair threshold of 3/4 of an inch or greater. So if property owners wish to have additional repairs made that's less than that threshold, they can do so, but it would not be qualified for the reimbursement program. And also repairs to do with remodel redevelopment or new development should not be eligible for the reimbursement program. These projects are conditioned or required to repair existing sidewalk defects or defects caused by the construction itself. Staff's recommendation is to limit eligible repairs to only those that meet the city's threshold, 3/4 of an inch or greater, and also sidewalk repairs that are part of a remodel redevelopment or new development project not be eligible for reimbursement in the city's program. Another policy, another clarification needed has to do with reimbursement for private contractor repairs. This is when the property owner hires his or her own contractor to do the repairs. Reimbursing for private contractor repair poses challenges to the city's program. For example, if the repairs were done in previous years, city's program is based on an annual budget, so it'd be harder to reconcile the two. Staff will not know how much to budget for reimbursement versus what would be left over after reimbursement for the city's program. Timing of the program will be affected. We may have to wait for a reimbursement deadline, and then, based on what's left over from the budget, see if we would have, even have enough budget to plan for a city project. And also verifying the contractor's invoice could be difficult. Private contractors' unit price tends to be higher than the city's contract price, which may lead to the city paying higher costs for sidewalk repairs. Based on those reasonings, staff's recommendation is to only, recommendation is only sidewalk repairs performed by the city's contractor be eligible for the 50% reimbursement under the city's program. And no repairs performed prior to January 1st, 2018 be eligible for reimbursement. Currently, the city's program has about a backlog of 324 properties. These defects have not been evaluated based on a new threshold of 3/4 of an inch. We hope that based on the higher threshold, there may be less defects to repair, but we don't know the actual cost of that yet. After the program resumes, we'll, staff will go out, evaluate the defects, and we'll have a much better understanding of what annual budget it'll take to eliminate the backlog. This discussion will come back to the council during the upcoming 2018-2020 capital improvement program budgeting session. To recap, tonight's recommendation is to adopt a resolution limiting the 50% city cost share reimbursement to sidewalk repairs that are part of the city's annual sidewalk repair program, not allowing reimbursement for private repairs, and not allowing reimbursement for any work performed prior to January 1st, 2018. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, a good presentation, Grace, thank you. First question, probably for Jeff. Jeff, when did we adopt this change and approach, and then we sort of put it in advance because staff had identified some issues that needed to come back for clarification? Heads the meeting tonight.
Seems to me it was maybe nine months ago?
Okay. But it was, it was sometime in 2017, I wasn't sure exactly when.
Yeah, it definitely was 2017.
Were there any, Grace, were there any repairs done by the city's contractor during that period of time, or was the whole program in advance?
And that was March 13, 2017, when council made a modification. After that, was this, the program has been, was put on hold, there was no more repair done by the city's contractor.
The reason I'm walking through this, and I'm glad to hear that, is because I understand the logic behind the January 1st, 2018 date, sort of, no retrospect. Had we done some work in there and then told people, well, we adopted the policy, but now we've denied you reimbursement, that would be awkward. So I'm glad to hear that there's nothing that fell through the cracks there. The other, the last question I had is, I just want to clarify. So the proposal is to limit this reimbursement to work done by the city's contractor. If I, as a property owner, the city has tagged a crack in one of the panels, what do you call them, squares of the sidewalk in front of my house, so that has to be repaired, perhaps for aesthetic reasons, I want to repair and some of the other panels around that. I understand under this proposal that the city would only be reimbursing the cost of the one that was actually cracked. But would I be prohibited from making my own private arrangement with the city contractor, saying, look, I want to, I want you to replace, let's say, all four squares, and the city's only going to pay me for half of the cost of one of the squares, and I'll pay for the rest of it? But would I be allowed to do that?
The private, property owners are allowed to contract with the same contractor or a different contractor.
You see where I'm going, it's just that a lot of times, I mean, I know a number of neighbors who, when the city has tagged stuff and they want to replace it, they don't want to replace just the one square or whatever, it's because it looks weird. So, good, I'm glad to hear that that flexibility exists. Thank you.
So I had a question. Let's assume that we start January and come October, we've run out of money. We've got $60,000, and that's all there is, and it's gone. But there's a problem, and I'm a homeowner, let's say, and I say, you know, it probably needs to be fixed in my, in front of my house. Well, I certainly don't want to do it then, I want to wait for the next budget cycle, right? Okay, so I'll have that opportunity?
Yeah, currently, we have a backlog of 300-something, so we wouldn't be able to even get to that property as they come in. So it would be subsequent.
You see where I'm going here.
Wait, though.
Yeah, so people won't get stuck, depending on their timing, of not being reimbursed?
No, well, they wouldn't be reimbursed in that annual.
Do you see where I'm going here?
Subsequently, when we get to their property.
Right, but do you see where I'm going here? I'm not, you're not going to fix it and then go, sorry, we didn't have any money for you?
Right, we wouldn't do it.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
That sparked an interesting question. I mean, there, no, there isn't, there isn't any, just like in many other situations, if staff runs out of budget money for something, staff always has the option of coming back to the council, and if the council still approves, to grant more money.
No question. But I just wanted to make sure the homeowner wasn't stuck in the middle.
No, I agree, that's fair.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question that came to my mind, Grace, was shouldn't there be some sort of per-property limit? I mean, if you've got, a homeowner's got like $9,000, $10,000 worth of work done, and we have $60,000, we could end up using a huge amount of money for one piece of property. I mean, shouldn't there be some sort of a cap on what we repair per property?
Currently, we don't have a cap. It's just whatever that meets the criteria, the 3/4 of an inch. But obviously, that is a program change that the council, the council can add in if that's, if the council wishes to put a cap per property.
Okay. Maybe we could ask Jeff for some guidance on that.
Yeah, you know, we talked about that at the staff level, and it just became, we just couldn't come up with a protocol that made sense, that just sort of led to too many potential variables. If you're a corner property, you already have a lot more potential sidewalk frontage than the average property. Well, that's 50% more for you to pay, too. And so we just kind of got to the point where we felt like, you know, if we run into a situation where we feel like the city's not being treated fairly, or somebody's trying to take advantage, you know, if we hear about people going out and vandalizing their own sidewalks, you know, we'll be back in front of you, or we'll be, you know, we'll be working with our attorneys and our code enforcement folks to address any bad apples that come across. Otherwise, if somebody just happens to have more, you know, cracks in their sidewalk, you know, a lot of that, this is earthquake country, you know, it's really no more their fault than it is the city's fault that, you know, a crack develops in a sidewalk.
All right, well, I'm glad to know that staff had the same problem I did, because I don't know what cap to put on it. All right, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Gentlemen, what do you want to do here?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash?
15.
15. I guessed that, but I wanted to wait. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos limiting the 50% city cost share reimbursement to sidewalk repairs that are part of the city's annual sidewalk repair program project, not allowing reimbursement for private repairs and not allowing reimbursement for any work performed prior to January 1st, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, moving on, 9C, consideration of adopting a resolution supporting the San Carlos commuter shuttle and submitting an application to the San Mateo County Shuttle Program for another two years of grant funding. Ms. Peterson?
Yes, me again. So this evening, we are asking the council to approve an application for another grant. The city originally obtained a two-year grant from the San Mateo County Transit Authority to operate a shuttle which provides last-mile transportation to employees traveling from Caltrain to some businesses along industrial road. Our partners joined us, and the shuttle launched in September of 2016. We serve Palo Alto Medical Foundation, Nutera, Nugent, and Novartis at the current time. And those, or those who partner with us have been paying the grant match. The TA is now calling for grant applications for the next year, which will commence in fall. The grant applications are due on February 9th, so we would need council's approval of this grant application this evening. And we have this evening with us Jennifer Savage, who's a consultant with Neil Martin Associates, and she's helping us on this grant application. So Jennifer.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tara provided you some great background information. Just a little bit more, we are collecting a half-cent tax within the county, and that half-cent tax can go to programs like these. Earlier this evening, you had a summary of the multiple, of transportation agencies in this area that work together on this, one of which works around our congestion relief program. And that particular program supports local and employer commuter shuttles. Our current shuttle that we're speaking about tonight is the San Carlos commuter shuttle, and we applied for a grant that was originally due in February 2016, and then the operation actually started in the fall of 2016. The operation of the shuttle itself is managed by commute.org, one of the transit agencies. And this shuttle, as it relates to the City of San Carlos, supports a number of plans that the city has in place. Tonight, we are asking for your support to submit the next round of the grant application, requesting additional funds. And this would support funding requests for the 2018 to 2019, as well as the 2019 to 2020 fiscal years. We do work with a number of transit agencies, and we have had two agencies review.
We do work with a number of transit agencies, and we have had two agencies review our draft application. It is drafted and included in your package tonight, and they have made some comments. So as we move forward tonight, I just wanted to note that the actual amount of funding is corrected. Right now, it's in your package noted as about $182,000, $183,000. And just to update our transportation provider fees, it would go up for about $4,000, so about $187,000 that we'd be asking. And that covers the two fiscal years. The existing route is shown in the solid blue line in the picture overhead, and then the existing stops are, starting at the San Carlos train station, and then stopping at four stops along Industrial Road. And this all serves the businesses to the north end of the city. We are looking at two new partnerships, and that is, one, shown on the right-hand side of your screen for the hotel under construction, the Marriott Residence Inn, and then towards the top left, with the San Mateo County Human Services Department, looking at partnering with them as well. They've recently done an employee survey, and we are waiting to hear back from their staff about the interest in participating with us. Dash line shown at the lower right-hand corner of the map shows potential route, but we do want to work with our, our partners, commute.org, to optimize the, the turning points for the commute shuttle, and make sure that timing is efficient. So again, we are asking your support and adoption of a resolutions supporting the commuter shuttle and submitting the application for the next round of funding. This concludes staff presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add a little bit more color. I appreciate the presentation. I sit on the TA board, and we, we discussed the shuttle program in December. So just for my colleagues' benefit, this shuttle is sort of in a bucket of what are called commuter shuttles. Their target, the TA's target is for those shuttles to operate at about $8 per passenger. And if you're outside of a 50% variance, so in this case, $12 per passenger, after two years of running the shuttle, then you're required to increase your match, local match up to, up to 50%. Currently, we get about a 25% local match. Our shuttle ran at $12.76 per passenger last year for their first year, which wouldn't have made the cut, but it was the only first year. So it's likely that we'll get it down below that threshold in the second year. We carried 7,359 passengers, an average of six passengers an hour, so that gives you a sense of the scale. So this is a bucket of funding for the TA that has traditionally been undersubscribed, which is why I was really appreciative of staff going out and looking for an opportunity, and we were able to get funding. I'm very supportive of it continuing. So I just wanted to add that color from the discussion in December.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really just had one question of Jennifer. You mentioned that there's going to be anticipated contributions by partnering businesses. Do we know how, approximately how many businesses and how much they would be expected to contribute?
Their contributions are based on the number of their employees, and so it does range between employers. The total amount that we would be looking for from them for the next two fiscal years is about $62,000, and that's between the partnerships. Now, with our new partnerships expanding, we don't have an exact count just yet, but we would continue to work with them to find out, one, their number of employees, and if they would be interested in partnering.
All right, so it's going to vary, and do you have a formula? I think Cameron mentioned something, about $8 per passenger or something?
Yes, there is a formula. I don't have that, that value handy, but it is based on the number of employees and the value tied to that.
So if I have 20 employees, I multiply 20 by whatever that fee is, and that's my contribution?
Correct.
Thanks.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer. Good presentation, great program. Expect to see it, hope to see it do better. In fact, my question, both for you and, and this may also be something that Jeff may want to weigh in on. I'm interested in what things can we do from a policy point of view to encourage employers to participate in this program? Because if I understand it correctly, it's, it's, it's a choice, at least I think it's a choice. It's, it's not something that we can say, "Hey, you're above a certain size in a certain area, you got to participate in this program."
In some instances, it is a choice. There are some businesses where their conditional use permit is tied to actually requiring to have an employee shuttle, and this enables them a way to satisfy that condition.
So would that potentially be an example of that? Might that be if they had to do some transportation demand management, and we could make this a requirement, as, that's one of the ways that they meet it?
Certainly, we could look at that as part of transportation demand management. The tricky thing with transportation demand management is that it is, it moves. So we don't necessarily want to require a business to participate in this particular shuttle in the event that the shuttle does or doesn't work, or this, the route gets changed, and it no longer works for that particular employee. But certainly, we can write it into the conditions as an option to explore.
Jeff, anything you want to weigh in on there?
No, that was exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, I'll just leave it then, saying that, that I hope that staff is looking for opportunities as we have, because as we all know, we have some potentially very significant projects coming through, and this sounds like a great thing that we ought to try and leverage as much as we can.
Okay, Mr. Grocott?
So just a question, based on what Cameron mentioned about the $8 versus 12, that's about a 25% reduction. For this to go on, we'd need to get down to that $8, barring inflation, I guess.
Can I clarify?
Well, let me ask my question.
Yeah, sure.
So the question is, I can see two ways of doing that, you know, operation costs or upping ridership. Is that, so I'm assuming the goal is you up the ridership in order to reduce the cost per passenger?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, fair enough.
So, and just, just to clarify, it's, if we don't hit the $12 per passenger, you can still operate the shuttle, it just requires a larger local match.
Okay, you mean the $8?
It's, $8 is their, is what they're asking people to, that's their target benchmark, sort of the average of the group.
Yeah.
You have to be within 50% of that, so that gets you to $12. Sorry, I didn't explain that very well, but...
All right, clear. And then, just a comment to Mr. Olbert's questions about having companies participate. I do believe when we approved Palo Alto Medical Foundation, them being part of some type of shuttle program was part of their approval process.
Correct.
Okay, so is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash 16.
Second.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, supporting the San Carlos commuter shuttle and submitting an application to the San Mateo County Shuttle Program for another two years of grant funding.
So I heard a second already in there.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, moving on, 9D. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the amended salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019. Ms. Mendenhall?
Evening, council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. If council is okay with it, I'd like to take items D and E at the same time and present them both, they're both very similar. Is that okay?
Let me read that, then. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the amended salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group is item E for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019. We will take separate votes on this, but yeah, just want to make sure it's read. Okay.
So before you tonight is a consideration of two amendments, both for the management and the confidential groups. This past summer, council approved the salary and benefit resolutions for both management and confidential for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019. This included a 2% cost of living increase in each of the two years. And one thing I want to note, too, is the management unit does cover the city attorney and the city manager's contract, so it was included there as well. In November, the city council approved the memorandum of understanding for the Teamsters unit for the period of September 1st, 2017 through August 31st, 2019. Along with an increase to the encaulpe, the MOU included a cost of living increase of 3% in the first year, beginning November 27th, 2017, or for approximately nine months, and a 3% cost of living increase in the second year. Historically, it's been customary for the council to approve the same type of cost of living increases across all units. So therefore, in order to provide parity among the employee groups, the resolutions before you tonight authorize the following. An additional 1% cost of living increase effective October 1st, 2017, to bring the total cost of living increase to 3% for, for a total of nine months. And an additional 1% cost of living increase effective July 9th, 2018, to bring the total cost of living increase in the second year from 2% to 3%. The total cost of both of these resolutions is estimated to be about $42,000 in this fiscal year.
I got clearly confused when you started saying dates. Could you say those dates again? I, I didn't...
Yeah.
I'm reading dates here, and then you're saying other dates, so go ahead.
So the 1% cost of living increase for both the management and the confidential would be effective October 1st, 2017.
Okay.
And then the second year, there'd be an additional 1% effective July 9th, 2018.
Why July 9th and not July 1st?
It's the first day of a pay period.
Okay, I'm just asking, because it doesn't make sense. Okay, fine. Okay, questions? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item from the public? Okay, gentlemen? Let's do D, D, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash...
17.
17, I was going to guess that. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, approving the amended salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
All right, moved in second, any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, 9E.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash 18.
Correct.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, approving the amended salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019.
A second.
All right, moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, moving on to 10. 10A, council members' reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two quick items. One is, we had a public speaker tonight in the general public comment period who, among other things, talked about the soft earthquake retrofit-type program. And I have to admit, that's something that's been in the back of my mind for, for quite a while, and was wondering whether or not there was any other interest on the dais in having staff come forward to us with how such a program might apply in San Carlos, what it would look like, what the cost impacts would be, et cetera. Because I do think the issue of, you know, our housing stock is relatively limited, it's aging, and every time there's a big earthquake, you learn more about how you should have built the buildings. And so I'd just like to see if there's any interest in getting a staff report on that.
I actually would be interested, I, I think I'd be interested, because I don't know how many units really would be affected. I mean, because I think there's a lot, in White Oaks especially, there wouldn't be that many. I mean, relatively speaking, but there might be, but I don't know if anyone else is interested in that. Hearing none?
I would.
You would? Okay. So that, so I think staff, I mean, this is something we could look at in the next 60, 90 days or something, if, depending on, on what information we needed to get. I mean, to me, it's, how many units would even be affected by that? You know, I'm not even sure, well, I don't know, until we find out.
Yeah, we'll put together a cursory report for you. I'd rather not commit sitting right here to the timeline.
Okay, that's fine.
Go back and talk to the building official and get them...
I don't think I'm going to have a shot clock on it.
Yeah, doesn't matter, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
And my second item was really just a question, and I'm asking this on behalf of the mayor, because I know how desperately he's awaiting the new electronic voting system. So I just was curious if we have an update on when that might be going operational.
You know, I was actually supposed to be testing it last week, and my kids were sick, so I had to reschedule that.
That's quite all right.
That's okay, don't rush, no rush.
Thank you.
Whenever we can schedule it for next year. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I don't have any committee reports.
Okay, well, thanks very much, then.
But I do have one other thing. I want to get home. This, I'm going to make this very quick. There, I've heard from a few residents that have asked since we had the wild, recent wildfires, what the danger is to San Carlos. We are, we have hills that haven't burned in, I don't know, maybe a century. And I was wondering if there'd be any interest on the part of my fellow council members to having a report from our fire services on potential wildfire threats to San Carlos?
I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
Yeah, we go. Thank you.
All right. Staff, any comments on administrative business, city administrative business?
The mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, you flashed in late, didn't you? Mr. Grocott, excuse me.
So, since we're adding things to our future agendas, it has come to my attention recently how easily the city coin, that I remember being approved back when Omar, I believe, was the mayor, how easily those can be acquired by any one council member and given away to a citizen for whatever reason, without really there being any, necessarily a public meeting or something from the dais. And I think it would behoove us to review that policy. Actually, there is virtually no policy surrounding the distribution or the awarding of that coin.